Okay, it's officially 5:45, so we'll start our meeting. I appreciate everyone being here this evening. The first item on our agenda, item one is to call our meeting to order and establish a quorum of our board team. We have a quorum of our board team, so that takes care of item one. Item two, we're honored this evening to have Pastor Jay Clattworthy from, he's the senior pastor at Life Point Baptist Church, and he's going to lead us in our dedication.
Thank you for the opportunity to lead you in a word of prayer tonight. Would you pray with me? Father God, we come before you tonight acknowledging you for who you are, the Creator and the Sustainer of all things, that you alone are wise and endowed with knowledge. And Father, we are thankful. We are thankful that you, through the grace that you have shown to us, have provided a way for eternal life, that if we would turn from our sin and believe on you, we would have everlasting life. And Father, tonight as we meet, we ask that you would bless the plans that are made. Father, that our students would grow in wisdom and knowledge, that our students would have productive and safe school year. And I just pray for each parent, each student, and each board member here tonight, as they exercise their different responsibilities, that it would be all to your honor and glory. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you so much, Jay. We appreciate you being here. Our next item is item three. I told these group of young students, I had them guess, I went to McGill Elementary, so they're all McGill Mustangs, McGill Fighting Mustangs. And I went to McGill, so I had them guess how many years ago I went to McGill. So one of them guessed 12 years, which is pretty nice. And another one guessed 90 years. You know, so that's closer than the 12. But these are the students from McGill that are coming forward. So y'all come forward at this time. We have Matthew Gomez, Reagan Stevenson, Gabby Garola, Will Hughes, Lizzie Havens, and Alexis Berzozza. So let's, if you'll stand, they're going to lead us in our pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
And I told them they would stay up here if any parents wanted to take pictures. So y'all line back up and face that way this time. I also told them they needed to be really loud when they did it, so it was awesome. They did perfect. Thank y'all. Good evening and welcome. As president of the Board of Trustees of San Antonio Independent School District, I'd like to welcome all of you who were present at tonight's regular board meeting. Also, would like to welcome those of you who might be watching the tape of this meeting on our public access channel, Channel 4. We appreciate your interest in our students and our district. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most if not all items on our agenda this evening have been previously discussed at our earlier pre-agenda board workshop. As members of the San Antonio Independent School District's Board of Trustees, we're here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the school district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, with that in mind, we have an item on every one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team an opportunity to do so. I will make certain that we give everyone an opportunity to speak on any item not listed on our agenda. Additionally, prior to taking any votes, I'll ask audience members if they would like to make any comments. Anyone wishing to make comments on any agenda item should do their best to limit their comments to three to five minutes. In compliance with state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become a part of the SAISD's permanent legal record. In order that the tape will adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others might be speaking. Also ask, as I remind my fellow board team members, to please turn off or silence their cell phones at this particular time. Again, it's my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's meeting. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of our district. Our next item is recognitions, and to do those recognitions, our executive director of athletics, Brent McCully, is going to help us with that.
Mr. Lehman, Dr. Detlaw, Board of Trustees, we always appreciate the opportunity to be here, and we'll do our best not to stretch this board meeting out too far, but we have a large group tonight. It's our winter and spring sports. We had a very active winter and spring this year on both campuses. We have lots of student athletes here tonight, but we do appreciate you taking this time to recognize these great student athletes. And we're going to begin tonight with the Lakeview students, starting with the Lakeview girls track. Coach Kenter.
Some of them are a little nervous, so just kind of bear with them. I want to thank board members. I would like to thank you parents that are here for supporting the maiden track and field team, for allowing us to recognize these athletes, and for me to be able to brag on them a little bit, because they are a great group of girls. We had a very successful track season this year. We set seven ladies to area and beyond area, which was great, three in an open event, and an 800-meter relay team. The ladies before you are what track is all about, dedication, determination, and drive. Two of these ladies were actually just alternates on the relay, and they knew there was a very slim chance that they would even get to compete at area, but they still came out every day 100% at practice. They gave it their all, which is amazing and great dedication for these girls. It was a great group of ladies, and they did a really great job representing Lakeview at area, and we did have one go to regionals. So I'd like to let you know who they are. My first is Riley Smith. She placed fifth at district in shot put, and competed at area placing seventh. It was her first time. Alieta Peterson, she was one of the first leg of the 800-meter relay. Jordan Pinkney, she ran the open 200, placed third at district, and fifth at area. And she was also the second leg of the relay. Jade Parker was the third leg of the 800-meter relay. Denisee Light was one of my alternates. Shay Gonzalez was another alternate. And my last one is Veronica Diaz. She went for pole vault. She was your district champ. She was second place at area, fifth place at regionals. She was also the anchor leg for my 800-meter relay, which placed fourth at district and seventh at area. And Veronica has also signed to go to the University of A&amp;M Commerce to compete in track and field, which is amazing. These girls are really young, sophomores. I think I'll have one senior next year, so look for these girls to do great things in the next couple of years coming. And here's your 2018 maiden track team.
Okay, next up is the Lakeview boys' track team, and Coach Reynolds, you guys come on up.
First of all, I'd just like to thank y'all for having us here tonight. I'd like to thank the board members, administration, our school, community, their parents. We have these kids for about 16 weeks, starting in January. It's a long grueling season. There's a lot of things that come up in those 16 weeks. They work hard every day. Sometimes we have to practice in the mornings, afternoons. They're very flexible. I'm very proud of what we did this year. I'm very proud of these guys right here there before you. This is epitome of Lakeview right here. These guys right here do everything that you ask. Extremely coachable. I'm going to be missing the two that are leaving me next year very much. They definitely blessed me and blessed my family. So first up, we have Elliot Peterson. Elliot was the fourth-place finisher in the 100-meter dash area qualifier. Next up, we have Jordan Waichin. Jordan was a fourth-place finisher at area in high jump. Jordan actually went out at 6'4" at the area meet, almost cleared it, almost went to regionals. It was very close. Those two are my juniors. Very excited to have both of them back next year. For my next two, these are the seniors that are going to be leaving me this year. Garrett Friday, he was a 300-meter hurdler. Garrett probably, you know, has the most heart I've ever seen at the end of a race. He usually comes back and wins it right at the end. So he placed third place at the district meet. Very proud of him and what he did. And Tomas Breonas. Tomas was the district champion in the one mile and the two mile, placed second in district in the 800. Tomas was also the area champion in the one mile and the two mile. He placed fifth at area in the 800. I don't know if he was too upset about that one, because he didn't have to run three distance races anymore. Winning competed at the regional meet. He did it very well. P yard every time that he was out there. The two guys who actually won from our regional meet, won the state meet, and both, or the 16 to 32 and the 800 meter. So he was going against those two guys. So it was very difficult in our region for these guys to actually get out. I'm very proud of them, very proud of how they represented Lakeview, our community. Northside Pride is right here in front of you. Tomas will be going to the Marines, I guess, in a couple of months, right? For mama. So we'll send you with prayers, Tomas. This is your 2018 Lakeview track team.
Okay, the next group up is the Lakeview powerlifting team. Coach Lyons?
Good evening. Well, we thank you very much for having us here tonight. Thank you school board for being our support, and thank you Coach McCully and Coach Baker for giving us the things that we need and giving us coaches the opportunity to coach these kids. These kids that you see before you are some of the hardest-working kids that I've ever seen. Some of them, I ask them to come at 6:30 in the morning to lift weights, and some of them also come after school as well, along with getting their athletic period workout, because all of these kids are dual-sport athletes. And so these kids know how to, I jokingly say, pick up, pick some things up and put them down. But they can pick up a lot of weight, and they can move it around, and they do a good job, a great job, of taking care of each other. Powerlifting is very much an individual sport, but one of the things that we hold pride in is being the best teammate out on the platform or out on the gym floor, wherever we may be. So if any one of these kids is not necessarily the one in the rack doing the lifting, they're right there yelling at them, or getting them prepped, or putting their equipment on the right way. And that's some things that I kind of puff my chest out a little bit, because they do that. They do that well. And that says a lot about them. I do push them, and our coaches push them to do those things, but a lot of times those kids do that without me asking. And so we'll start with our ladies first, our maiden powerlifting team. We took 11 ladies to the regional championships, and with that, we have a regional champion, regional runner-up, a record-breaker, and five state qualifiers from those groups. So the ladies that we have here tonight, we have a senior, Lizette Hernandez. She was a regional runner-up, and she set and holds the new bench press record for Division One, Region One in powerlifting. And she also was a state qualifier and finished very well. And so next in line, we have Kalen Hayes. She is a sophomore this year. So Kalen, through the regional meet, ended up being a state alternate. But a week in, there's a two-week period before regionals and state, I got a phone call saying that she got moved up, because one of the other ladies had to drop out. And so she got to compete at the state meet and performed very well. And so very proud of her. You already met Riley Smith. She's also a sophomore. She also qualified for the state meet and ended up seventh? Yeah, seventh at the state meet. So those three ladies, two of them I get back, one of them I'm sorry to see, see leaving, but she's been a joy to have. Sometimes she keeps me on my toes, but she knows how to take care of us as well. So those are, that's your maiden powerlifting team. The fellas you see before you, we also took 11 gentlemen to the regional powerlifting meet, and have one regional champion, two regional runner-ups, and three state qualifiers. And so, starting off, we have Toby Lambert. He's a senior, finished, what were you, seventh at the regional meet. Next to him, we have the Brothers Christiansen. First one up is Bubba. He's a senior. Bubba was a regional runner-up, which means he got second place in his class, moved on to the state meet and performed very well. Next, we have his little brother, maybe not so little brother, Carter Christiansen, sophomore. I get him for another two years. Blessed to have him. Carter finished up sixth place at the regional meet. The long-haired guy in front of you is Miguel, Miguel Arroyo. Miguel was our regional runner-up this year, and I know he kind of kicks himself every now and then with powerlifting, especially the little guys. Sometimes they move up weight classes and down weight classes, and he struggled to be in the weight class. And so finally, we looked at the numbers and said, look, you know, you've got another year. Let's go in this weight class. You'll have to give up your regional championship to a teammate. We'll talk about that in a minute. But he earned him a right to go to the state meet and finished, what, eighth this year at the state meet? Been to the state meet three out of his three years, and so finished his highest ranking this year. And so that's Miguel. Jeremy Morales, I hardly ever say that the right way. Guy, he finished fourth at the regional powerlifting meet. He's also a senior. We'll be missing him. And this guy down here at the end is Cody Combs. And Cody Combs should be a familiar face, because he's been here all four years that I've gotten the joy to do this. Usually, I jokingly say he's our big man on the team, but he really is. If you have ever had to measure a mental attitude or a mental toughness, this dude is a giant. He's a beast. He's our technician. The way a weightlifting meet goes, it's separated into 11 weight classes, and then half of those weight classes are called the light racks, and then the other half is called the heavy racks. Well, at the regional meet, Cody got the best lifter on, best overall lifter on the light racks, best bench press on the light racks, best squat on the light racks, and the regional champion. Also went to the state meet and finished seventh place. One of our highest finishes at the state meet to date. I think the only other highest was fifth-place finish from a kid named Aaron Allen. And so that's some good company. So Cody Combs and the rest of the Lakeview powerlifting team. And before I give these kiddos a round of applause, I got to talk about the guy behind me. This is Coach Mahia. He's my assistant, and he asked me what time to be here, and I told him, and so I'm going to call him out. This guy, he helps me out, makes sure I know where my clipboard is, makes sure I know where the money's at, and does a great job, you know, carrying himself and carrying the team. He's been around West Texas for a while, been around powerlifting for a while, and so he brings a great deal of experience, and I'm very grateful for him, too. So 2018 Lakeview powerlifting team.
Okay, we'll move now to Central High School. And up first, we have the swim team and Coach Hague. And I noticed Val's here, too, so maybe he'll speed you up again, David, this year. So come on up, Coach Hague.
Come on out. I told Julie, if she let me go first for Central, I'll speed it up. So here we go. Girls, kind of team recognition. We had Sophie Forbes qualify for state for the third year in a row. We set four new school records this year. We also, one girl honorable mention all-state, four girls first-team all-region, two girls second-team all-region, seven girls first-team all-district, and two girls were named second-team all-district. We had two juniors qualify for Texas Academic All-State Swim Team, Sophie Forbes and Kylie Carr. Now, I'm just going to say a little bit about each person that came. Sophie Forbes wasn't here. She's kind of the face of our girl swim team. She's been to state three times. She went to her brother's graduation in Cornell, so she's not here. So good thing there. Lacey Bednar, step forward. Lacey, first-team all-district, first-team all-region. She was on a two-in-a-free relay, missed going to state by 18 hundredths of a second, got third at regionals. She's had a school record in 100 butterfly, nine-year-old school record, and she holds school records now in 100 fly, 200 medley relay, 200 free relay, 400 free relay. Want to go, Lacey? Kylie Carr, first-team all-district, first-team all-region, district runner-up in regional consolation finalist, 100 breast. She was on our third-place 200 free relay that just missed state, and she is also on the medley relay, swimming the breaststroke leg, that set a pool record this, a school record this year. And she's the one that was on Texas Academic All-State team. Next, Maddie Stevens. Maddie set a school record this year in the 200 freestyle, and she was on our relays. She swam on the 200 free relay. They got third at regionals, and she holds school records now, 200 free and 400 free relay. Chloe Edmurg. Oh, Chloe next. Chloe set a school record in 100 backstroke this year. We broke four girls' school records, and it was a 40-year-old record, set by Janie James, who was fourth in the state, 1979, my first year here. So that tells you when I got here, anyways. Forty years ago, if you can't do the math. Forty years. I can. Next, we got Avery Edmurg, Avery second-team all-district, 100 breaststroke, third place, and she won the regional consolation finals. Very proud of the girls' team. They did a great job this year, and all of them are coming back next year. So we look forward to having a good year with the girl swim team next year. Onto the boys. Boys had four state qualifiers this year. We also had academic awards, Academic All-America, Wyatt Waters, Brandon Klein. We had Academic All-State. We had five people, one named first-team all-state. Four boys were named honorable mention all-state. Five boys were named first-team all-region. Seven boys, first-team all-district. Quickly, let me start with Max Harvey's out there. He's up there, so we'll go with Max Harvey. Max Harvey, second-team all-district. He was fourth in district in freestyle, regional qualifier, swam in our 400 free relay that finished eighth at the regional meet. Next, Caleb Bush, honorable mention all-district, fifth-place regional consolation finalist. Has swum really, really fast, just a freshman, really coming out. We look forward to having him in breaststroke for three more years. Going back, Josiah Hargett. Josiah Hargett, first-team all-district, first-team all-region, honorable mention all-state. He was on the 200 free relay, district champion, regional champion, state qualifier. Swam a 222-leg on that. District runner-up in 100 freestyle. He's Texas Academic All-State. Next, we got Riley Hill. Riley Hill was a state qualifier. Riley went to state, ended up eighth in the 50-yard freestyle at state, 11th in 100 backstroke at state, and that was about his fourth time swimming that event. So we were going to go another event, pick that one. He ended up getting 11th at state with that. 200 free relay, state qualifier. He now holds pool records, 200 medley relay, 200 free relay, 400 free relay, 100 backstroke, 200 free, not the 50 free yet. He's working on that one. Matt Brewer got that one last year. Anyways, this group's, we had a very good year this year. All these guys are coming back. We had three seniors couldn't make it tonight, but they were valuable to us. We're going to miss those three senior boys. But we got a big group coming back next year, and I want to thank everybody that was involved. We got an additional assistant coach coming in next year, and next year's my last year. So hopefully, we'll let somebody take over and get things going. My assistant coach, my wife Val, she's bailing out at the semester, I believe, after one half a year. But we've enjoyed it. The school board's been very nice to us and taking care of us. The athletic department, Mr. McCully, is always taking care of us. So we appreciate everything you've done for us, and we'll try to make you proud next year and do a great job in the pool. Thank you.
Okay, next up is the Central girls' soccer. Coach Henry?
Okay, we fit. We appreciate y'all inviting us up here. It's a fantastic group of kiddos. I've really enjoyed it this year, very successful as well. The record this year is 19 wins, three losses, and two ties. They're district 868 champions. That's a three-peat for these girls. They're bi-district champions. They're 11 straight playoff appearances. Came across a group in Marcus in the area round that was a state finalist, got them a little early, but they played really well against them, and I'm pleased with them. This year, team records, they had 104 goals scored this year, which is a record, 94 assists and 17 shutouts. Fantastic group of kids. My seniors I'll start with, they're going to just step up when I call their name. Georgia Ganster, she was Academic All-State this year. Sidney DeJollos, she was Academic All-State as well. Adam Moreno, second-team all-district. Kelsey Bunch, second-team all-district and Academic All-State. Tegan Wilson, first-team all-district. Bree Cottle, she was the 868 midfielder MVP of the year and Academic All-State, also a co-captain, along with Alexis Carino, 868 offensive MVP, Academic All-State, and our Hollands Award recipient this year. Those are my seniors. My juniors, Madison Maven, Raiden Hicks, Anissa Fernandez, Kelsey Wallace, who was second-team all-district this year, Megan White, who was second-team all-district this year, Michaeli Pope, who was second-team all-district this year, Addison Bonaventure, who was first-team all-district this year, C.T. Montez, first-team all-district, Aleah Marsh, who has to go to work, first-team all-district. No, you're not leaving yet. My sophomores, Desi Andrade, Torn Martinez. My sophomores, Desi Andrade, Torn Martinez, who is an honorable mention this year, Camille Torres, who is an honorable mention this year, and Avery Handy, who was a first-team all-district player this year, that is the 2018 Lady Cats Soccer Team. Give them a big round for me. Thank you. Appreciate it. See you next year.
Okay, next up with Central High School will be the boys' soccer team, and Coach Vu.
Thank y'all for having us. All right, so this is my 2018 Central Varsity Soccer Team. We're missing a few guys for different reasons, but our overall record this season was 17-5-1. We're district 868 champions also, and it's the first time in school history that the boys and girls won district championships in the same year. And our record was 13-1 in district. We lost in the first round also to Irving High School, who also made it to state, so I mean, can't hang our heads on that, but they were a great team that we fell to. We're gonna start with our underclassmen. We have sophomore Damian Espinoza, sophomore Kate Henry, who's second-team all-district, junior Miles Hauser, junior Marquis Cole, sophomore Albert Flores, who is all-district honorable mention, junior Kagan Plamel, who's first-team all-district, junior Carter Steele, all-district honorable mention. And then we have a group of seniors who provide a great leadership, and we're gonna miss a lot of these guys. We have Gage Smith, he was first-team all-district and Academic All-State. We have Dylan Loman, he was first-team all-district and Academic All-State. We have Isaiah Baldairis, second-team all-district, Academic All-State, and is graduating in the top 10% of his class. We have Jacob Nunez, all-district honorable mention and Academic All-State. We have senior Aiden Henry, he was MVP of district 868, Tasco Academic All-State, is gonna graduate in the top 10%. He's going to St. Mary's to continue his soccer career. We have Ezekiel Del Rio, he's second-team all-district, Academic All-State, and he's going to Howard Payne to continue his soccer career. And last, we have Logan Myers, he was our goalkeeper MVP of the district, graduating in the top 10%, Academic All-State, and he's going to Eastern New Mexico to play soccer as well. And these are our 2018 varsity soccer players.
Okay, next up with Central High School are the Lady Cats Basketball. Coach Dyer?
We're missing a few kids tonight, but to say a few things about the team, this was a relatively young team, but a team that I think accomplished a lot this year. They won 19 games in the regular season, and in a very tough competitive district, 868, we did finish fourth, and drew a tough first-round matchup, but they really did accomplish a lot this year. It was my first season here, and I was pleased with the start we had this year. Just to recognize the players we have here tonight, a few that aren't here. We have freshman Madison Foley. Madison was Academic All-District. Freshman Angelina Humphries, she was Academic All-District, as well as honorable mention all-district. We have junior Morgan Walker. Morgan was also Academic All-District, second-team all-district. She was also all-tournament at the San Antonio ISD Tournament, and she also won the Hollands Award for us this year. We have junior Paris Palmer. Paris was Academic All-District and first-team all-district. Not here tonight. We have sophomore Darren Green. Darren was Academic All-District. We have junior Victoria Lopez. Victoria was Academic All-District and honorable mention all-district. We had two seniors, Latavia Dawson. Latavia was second-team all-district selection. And we had senior Katie Nelms. Katie was first-team all-district, and she was also all-tournament at the San Antonio ISD Tournament. We did return six of our eight varsity players from this year, and we think we have a bright future ahead.
Okay, next up are the Central Girls Track Team. Coach Ventura, come on up.
At this time, I'd like to recognize our young ladies that have qualified for area and regional this year. I'd like to start with our freshmen. Sarah Scott, area and regional qualifier in the 4x400-meter relay. Jayden Chavez, freshman, area and regional qualifier, 4x4. We have Juliana Covey, who is not able to be here tonight. Junior, I mean sophomore Yasmin Contreras, area and regional qualifier in the high jump. Aleah Marsh was not able to be with us. She left early for work. She was an area and regional qualifier in the triple jump. We have Taylor Holly, junior, area and regional qualifier in the 4x4. We have Anastasia Candela, who's an area and regional qualifier in the long jump. And our seniors, we have Daniella Munoz, who is an area qualifier in the 1600 and 3200-meter run, and a regional alternate in the 3200-meter run. We have Bailey Kinney. A little note on Bailey, she is a four-time district champion in the 800-meter run. She is a four-time area and regional qualifier in the 800-meter run, and also was a regional qualifier in the 400-meter relay, and will be continuing her track career at Stephen F. Austin. We have Brianna Greenwood, senior, who's an area and regional qualifier in the 4x400-meter relay. We have Jasmine Diaz, who is a senior, area and regional qualifier in the pole vault. And we have Olivia Dabbert, who's a senior, area qualifying at 800-meter run. Great job, ladies. You represented us well with a lot of class, so thank you.
Okay, next up are the boys' track team at Central High School. Come on up, guys.
Good evening. I want to thank y'all for having us out here. We had 12 guys. Now, a lot of them aren't here tonight for work or a lot of various reasons. A lot of them are seniors, and you can imagine what they're getting excited to be able to do. We had 13 seniors, which is a lot for track, so that's pretty exciting when you have that many seniors out for your team. Before we get to these guys, we do have Coach Krim here tonight. He was our high-jump coach. We also had Coach Hauser, Coach Buzzard, and Coach Davis, who were also assistant coaches that helped propel these guys to great things. What we have here tonight, some guys that we don't have here tonight that were instrumental to area and regional qualifiers. Tanner Dabbert, Tristan Lopez, and Philip Lupton were all 4x4 relay guys who were regional qualifiers. Antonio Uriegas, and also his brother Alejandro Uriegas, were also on that same 4x4 that went to regionals. Matthew Childress was a triple jumper. Now, the thing about Matthew, Matthew was a three-time regional qualifier, and he was an area qualifier in triple jump this year. DeMarcus Cobb and Otto Haynes were on a sprint relay. And Otto Haynes was also a regional alternate in the 200. And then a young man, Tyler Milford, was a regional qualifier in the 800 and also the mile relay. Standing in front of you tonight is Malik Finley. He was a 4x1 area qualifier, and they narrowly missed going to regionals in the same event. Brandon Sabatka, he is a regional qualifier in the pole vault. Of note, he was an area qualifier last year in the pole vault and moved to the next step, so maybe we can get him moving up another step all the way to the state meet. And then, Duriel Taylor, he was an area and regional champion and a state qualifier where he placed fifth to give us some points at the state meet. They had an awesome year. Anytime you're taking 12 to area and 9 to regionals and 1 to state, anytime you can get anybody to state out of region 1, 68, you're doing some good stuff. And these guys did it. I can't be prouder of them and the coaching staff for getting there. So, thank y'all for having us.
Okay, next up are the ladies' gymnastics team, and Coach Walker, if you'll bring the ladies up.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us. Always look forward to coming here and presenting these girls to you and giving them some recognition for their hard work this year. This is the 2017-18 Girls Gymnastics Team. They are, they made history by being 17 years in a row the district and regional champions as a team. So, that's, yeah. And they did advance to state. At the state championships, the top six are awarded. We placed fifth this year, and I did joke with them a little bit at the banquet that at least now we have one of every trophy that the state gives out. So, I'd like to introduce the girls to you real quick, starting on the far end there. I've got a lot of sophomores right now. Afton Cummings, Melissa Hartman, Anna James, Savannah Razani, Mary Grace Thompson, Carly Wallace, Hannah Williams, and the only two seniors I have this year, Scotter McCowen and Kelsey Springer. So, I'll see, this is a little quiz for them. This is how I'll do it. If you were a district champion, step forward. If you placed in the top six at district champion and were named first-team district or second-team district or honorable mention district, step forward. There we go. Now, y'all step back. If you're a regional champion, step forward. If you were in the top 10 awarded at the regional championships and made first-team all-region or second-team all-region, step forward. There we go. Now, step back. If you placed in the top three at the state meet, step forward. If you placed in the top 10 at the state meet, step forward. There we go. Thank you. These girls represented us well, as always, when we go to the state championships. We're one of those teams that walk in there, and they know where we're from and who we are and who they have to beat. So, we had a good year this year. We're with a young team that we have, and we have adding some new faces coming up next year. I'm looking forward to the next few years with these young ladies. They work hard, very proud of them, and they represent San Angelo and Central High School very well, so thank you very much.
And now, the Central Boys Gymnastics Team. Coach, come on up.
I'm hoping they do it right. We have freshmen leading them out. It's the only way they learn, you guys throw them out there. Thank y'all for having us. We really appreciate it. It's always a lot of fun to do this. Let me get started. It was a rough year. We had a lot of obstacles, but we came through it. District, we were second. Regionals, we finished second place, and at state, seventh place. I'm gonna go through the individuals real quick, and then I'll tell you a little more about state. Our freshmen, when I call your name, if you'd step forward, Robbie Shute, Hunter Walker, Nick Hastings, Cody Cox, Emiliano Hinojos. Emiliano finished 10th at regionals on floor, and he was also named second-team all-region. Onto the juniors, we have Cory Springfield, Skyler Canyon. Skyler was a district six-altern round, second-team all-district. Regionals, he was second on floor, fifth on rings, seventh on vault, and first-team all-region. Next is Wayne Hines. He was our district champion on rings, fifth on parallel bars, sixth on high bar, and first-team all-district. At regionals, he was third on rings, 10th on parallel bars, first-team all-region. At the state championships, after his optional ring routine, I thought we might have won a state championship, but we finished second. And he was also named first-team all-state. Great job. Senior, I have Christian Cannon. Christian has done a great job from his freshman year all the way to here. I tell everybody, he started out, barely made the varsity team. I took a chance on him, and he has ended up being one of the best leaders we've ever had in the program. And one time, I got it right. I put him on the varsity team, and he proved me right, and I'm very proud of him. Christian was at district, sixth on pommel horse, fourth on vault and parallel bars, second-team all-district. At regionals, he was eighth on floor, fifth pommel horse, 10th on rings, fifth on vault, eighth parallel bars, fifth all-around, and first-team all-region. At the state championships, he finished 10th on parallel bars and second-team all-state. He was also our Hollands Award winner and the James R. White Scholarship Award winner, too. This year, going into state, all year long, I watched the rankings, and we were up there, number six, number seven, and then as it got closer to state, all these other teams were getting big scores. getting big scores, and the next thing you know, we're sitting there going into state, ranked tenth. And I thought, oh, my gosh. And I told the guys before regionals, I said, "This is gonna be your second-best meet, your second-best meet." And they had a great meet. I said, "Your best one's gonna be at state." And lo and behold, they had their best meet at the state championships and finished seventh. We were sixth after the first day, we just couldn't hang on. But the guys competed extremely well. It was their highest scores all year long, compulsory and optional, and so they finished strong, and I'm extremely proud of them, and thank y'all for letting us be here. Appreciate it.
Okay, Coach Odell's here tonight. I'm not sure he had anybody be able to make it due to work and some deaths and some families and things, but Coach Odell, Central Boy's Golf.
Thank you, Board, for having me here tonight. I do apologize, all my boys kinda are MIA tonight. I have one that had prior family commitment, another that's working, one whose grandmother passed away, and I'm not sure if he's back in town or not, one who is just, I guess, chickened out on me, didn't wanna come stand, didn't wanna come before the school board for some reason. And then Senior Jansen Smith, knowing him, he's probably out on the golf course right now. But the members of our golf team, our varsity boys golf team this year, were Senior Jansen Smith, juniors Flynn McNabb, Sergio Soto, Kobe Herring, and sophomore Enrique Leva. We had a very good year. Our team placed second, district runner-up at the district two-six-eight championship, qualified for regional as a team. Junior Flynn McNabb tied for eighth place individually at district and received all-district honors. And Senior Jansen Smith, for the second year in a row, won the district two-six-eight individual championship. At the regional championship, regional tournament, we, out of sixteen teams, we placed eighth place, which was really good. I believe it's the best finish we've had at regional in quite a while. We did beat out the district champion out of our district, so we were really excited about that. Senior Jansen Smith missed qualifying for state for the third year in a row by one lousy stroke. But that's golf. Sometimes it comes down to one stroke. But the boys are excited. Jansen will not be with us next year. He has committed to Texas Tech, and so he's looking forward to going to Texas Tech and playing at the next level. But we're excited about next year. We're looking forward to our new district, and both our boys and girls are gonna be very competitive in our new district. So, thank you again very much.
Okay, next up are the Lady Cats softball team. Coach Millsap, if you'll come on up.
Thank you very much for having us today. You know, we're always excited and proud to show off the accomplishments of these girls, but first of all, I'd like to say thank you to you as a school board. We got lights for the first time, and obviously you know this. You're the ones that said yes. But we had lights for the first time. These girls were really excited to play in their lights. The parents were really excited because we got to play in their lights. It allowed them to get to games, not in a rush, getting off work. Coaches were excited because we got to play in their lights. But the biggest advantage to this was our JV team got to play full games, every single district game, and because of that, our program's gonna get stronger. We've contended that for a long time, that because of the shortness, darkness, and JV not being able to finish games, it hampered us, okay? And I gotta brag on our JV, they finished at sixteen, five, and one this year, which is totally unheard of in past years. This group, varsity players, we're extremely proud of. They ended up sixteen, twelve, and two for the season, nine and five in district, which put us in third place, a solid third place. Landed us in the playoffs, we met up with South Grand Prairie once again. Yes, they swept us, but we competed well. I think day one got us a little bit of nerves, and we didn't play our typical ball. Day two, we really challenged them, but we came up a little bit short, four to two. An amazing group to work with. My first year as head coach, I could not have handpicked a better group of girls, and you know, and it's not lip service. I truly, truly mean that. So, allow me to introduce them. First off, number one, junior center fielder is Kaylee Ochenang. Kaylee made all-district first-team as a center fielder. Number two is junior second baseman Diamond Velasquez. Diamond got academic all-district, and she was honorable mention all-district team. Number three is junior shortstop, first baseman, catcher, you name it, Kaia Howell. She made honorable mention all-district. Number four is our senior catcher, Michaela Jones. Michaela's academic all-district. She was also named to the academic all-state team. She landed at thirty-six out of a class of seven-hundred-and-ten class rankings. Number five is senior left fielder Kayla Subia. Kayla's also academic all-district, academic all-state, and she was named to the all-district honorable mention team. Number six, senior shortstop Cindy Gilbert. She was named to academic all-district team, academic all-state. You notice recurring pattern here. And she was placed on the first-team all-district as a shortstop. We got number seven, senior third baseman Madison Stewart. Matty made second-team all-district as a third baseman. Number eight is senior first baseman Destiny Robles. Number nine, sophomore first baseman Emily Sanchez. Emily was academic all-district and named to the second-team all-district team as a first baseman. Number ten, Catherine Herrera, I imagine is working tonight, wasn't able to make it. She was academic all-district, all-state, and also honorable mention. Number eleven, we're finally getting some young ones here. Number eleven, freshman pitcher, and I'll list her as utility because she played several positions, Ashton McMillan. Ashton was academic all-district, and she was placed one of our one superlatives as the district eight-six-eight newcomer of the year. Number twelve, freshman pitcher and designated player Bailey Foltz. Bailey was academic, excuse me, was all-district first-team as a pitcher. Number thirteen is our freshman, she's the tall one here, Emily Sanchez. Emily primarily was JV player. We called her up for the playoffs. We expect her to do good things for us on the varsity next year. And then, last but definitely not least, number fourteen, freshman left fielder Samantha Howell. Samantha was also academic all-district. Coach Brewer is one of our coaches. He claims that today was his anniversary, and so we let him out of this. He was our outfield coach and first base coach. But other two coaches attending today, Kayla Matthews is our pitching coach and JV coach, and then Kendra Burleson is our statistician and the head JV coach. Just about a year ago, we came to see you guys, and we claimed that we made history because it was the first time we made playoffs, and that still holds true. But I claim we made more history today, or this year, I should say. We placed ten girls on the all-district team. We had eight girls that made academic all-district, four girls that made academic all-state. That has never happened in central softball before. So, we thank you, and we're really proud of these girls, and we're glad we could come for you.
Coach Pendry is home, extremely sick tonight, so Coach Patel is here tonight to do the recognition. Come on up, Coach.
Thank you, guys, for having us, and I want to first start off with, you know, echoing what Coach Millsap said about the lights. You know, a lot of excitement went into that, and one of the key things about that is, you know, for home games, we didn't miss any class. So, that was important for us because we do miss a lot of class with the travel, so we thank you for that. Much appreciated. You know, this year, our program, once again, was strong. Coach Pendry, you know, and our staff implemented a lot of mentally tough things for these kids because we had to deal with some adversity. You know, we had two injuries right off the bat, lost a big-time pitcher and offensive guy, and then we lost a first baseman in our first scrimmage. So, these kids didn't, you know, they didn't, you know, duck and run, you know, they faced everything, just like we asked them to do, and had a pretty good season. You know, our JV orange finished at eighteen and nine, in second place in the district, and our JV blue finished at twenty and nine. So, we have a bright future ahead of us. And other than that, we, you know, we had three seniors, so we're only, you know, we're graduating three kids, so we're returning a lot of experience, so, you know, high expectations, you know, for next year and for the seasons to come. And to introduce these kids, I'm gonna start with the seniors first. Jonathan Lamone, senior first-team all-district pitcher. He's also signed with Soul Ross University. Spencer Burris, couldn't be here tonight, conflict with some senior stuff going on, but he was second-team academic all-state. Rance Rosas, first-team all-district utility player. Nixon Brandon, first-team all-district catcher. Blake McKeska, second-team all-district center fielder. Dawson Daniel is one of the big ones we lost early on in the year, but we get him back for another year, his senior year. Trey Ness, second-team all-district pitcher. Hayden Stevens. Oscar Nino, second-team all-district first baseman. Mikey Cruz. Cole Nelson was the first-team all-district second baseman. Eric Rios. Kobe Toborski. Our two managers were River Subia and Hunter Fields. And then also, you know, we have a lot of kids that kind of bounce back and forth between our JVs, and we carried a lot for the playoffs, and those being Reed Holt, who was a sophomore, Jathan Trevino, Kyson Snelson, Tripp Noble, Ryan Ramone, Dylan Abbott, Nick Rivas, and Bryson Morell. So, we return, you know, we're glad to get the two that were injured back, and then we only graduate three, you know, three tough seniors to lose, but we've got a bright future. And these gentlemen finished at fifteen and twenty, and nine and five in district for, you know, good enough for a third-place finish. And, you know, we were bounced in the first round, we lost to South Grand Prairie, two tough, hard losses. One was four to three, and the other was four to nothing. So, you know, we didn't play our best, we competed, but dealt with a lot this year. So, 2018 Central Bobcat baseball team.
I think that concludes our recognitions. We appreciate our executive director, Brent McCollie, and our athletic team for the success that we've enjoyed this year. Our next item is, we have someone wishing to make comments to our board team on items not on our agenda this evening. Eric Sanchez, if you'd come forward. Anybody that doesn't know Eric, I know him reasonably well. He's been a really active supporter of our school district for many, many years, so we appreciate you being here.
Thank you. Good evening. How's everybody doing tonight? Wow, I'm very impressed. Got a good future coming, don't we? It's good to see everyone. Hello, everyone. Thank you for giving me a few minutes. I think I have five minutes, is that what I read? All right. I'm gonna take four minutes and fifty-nine seconds. I'm here as a parent, a concerned parent and grandparent. I have one child and four grandkids and SISD, so don't worry about trying to figure that out. But, you know, in light of what happened last week in Santa Fe, I just want to address the board. I thought about calling, I was gonna call each of you by phone, but that'd take a month before we play phone tag and everything, so I thought this would be a lot easier to take care of and address everyone and talk about our school security. And just here to instill a sense of urgency and a sense of action, and to see what we can do together about our kids' security. We don't want that kind of thing happening here, and it's horrible, it just, you know, brought tears to my eyes, broke my heart, and every time that happens, it does that. All of us who have children know how that feels. And I'm sorry, I'm a bit remiss, I'm not even sure if this might even be on the agenda tonight, is it? Can I ask that? On the agenda? I would just like to offer my time and my resources to assist in that and to ask, I'm not sure if I can, if we can ask if that's gonna be coming up soon, that issue, to address it?
Yes, absolutely. And we have a number of items that were part of our bond issue that dealt with security. Obviously, that failed a very, very close election, but it's the board's intent to continue to make sure, one of our board goals is to make sure that our students are safe and secure on the campuses, so we're certainly gonna be working hard towards that, Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you. Well, I think it's something that needs to prompt us to bring the rest of the community, involve the city, involve the private business community, involve everyone to pitch in and help out with this, and let me know what I can do to help. And I thank you for your time. I thank you for all you do, day in and day out. I haven't been here in several years at a board meeting, and that's just because I trust in all of you and what you do, and have great confidence in that, and, you know, I believe if the boat's sailing in the right direction, don't get in the way of the sails. So, thank you for all you do. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, and I guess to further address your comments, Eric, we do have security cameras as part of our board action items tonight, so we've got district-wide security cameras that will be voting, you know, to approve tonight, or at least voting on tonight. I don't know what the vote's gonna be, but we're addressing that and have been working on a security plan for a number of years, but to your point, I think the more proactive we are in addressing issues like this, the more support we're gonna have from our community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. We appreciate that very much. Our, next is our item six, the approval of our minutes. We have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion for Mr. Yago, and a second for Mr. Dindal to approve the minutes of our April ninth, 2018 financing pre-agenda meeting, and our 2016 April, excuse me, our April sixteenth, 2018 regular board meeting. Do we have any comments or questions from our board team? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is reports. We had in our Friday fax, we get a student enrollment report- We had in our Friday fax, we get a student enrollment report on a weekly basis, and then we also had an attendance report. We've been running about a hundred students nearly all year ahead of where we were last year. This most recent report showed us at forty-six students ahead of the same time last year, so we appreciate the community's confidence in our team here at SAISD. And then our six-month attendance report is also down about seven tenths of a percent, which is, I think we're still picking up the backside of some, a really horrific flu season, you know, on that, so, but our attendance is right at ninety-five percent, so we do a good job with attendance and that's how we get paid by the state, so we always encourage to get our students on campus as much as we can. Our next item, and I'm really excited to hear this item, is an update from Goodfellow Air Force Base on our Starbase program. Catherine's daughter was here early, being recognized, so we appreciate you being here, but Catherine Ganster is in charge of that program and she's gonna give us an update on that, so Catherine, thank you so much for your patience and we appreciate you being here.
No problem. Thank you, Mr. Layman, Dr. Detloff, members of the board. Very excited about the program as well, we've just finished up our first academic year. We started in September twenty-fifth of last year. We've gone through and gotten every single San Angelo ISD fifth grader through the program that, of course, was attending when we were doing their school, but without the support of the school district and without the kids and without the teachers, we could not have done the program. But hopefully, I can click this, I do this at work, but we'll see if it works. I clicked the right button. There we go. Okay. So, just basically, this is just the rundown, I know some of you have the history, but this is kind of just a timeline. I remember meeting in August 2016 with Dr. Detloff, Shelley Houlihan, and a couple other people, presenting the information to them, and then by August of 2017, we had it up and going. And we had the program where we signed over with SAMPA and did an agreement with them through the base. September twenty-fifth, we started the program. So, again, we still haven't been operating for a full entire year, we've just had an academic year so far. But we have over sixty locations across the US, Hawaii, Puerto Rico as well. The program is DOD-funded, as you know, and we also depend on our community, so a lot of community involvement within our program. So our next step, we just finished today with Fort Concho, we kind of had a glitch and I had to get them a very last day today. They came, they were very enthusiastic, they finished up our program, and now we start our summer program. So again, that's another first for us, so we hope to do that starting June fourth. We're also gonna pull in some of the middle school kids as well during that program. Okay. So this is just our basic curriculum that we've done, most of you have kind of know we do STEM, so STEM involved, you have your physics, your chemistry, your technology, engineering, and then we have our mathematics and our STEM careers. So kids come in, they're excited, they have a field trip, they're there for five days. We teach them a lot, they leave and they're excited, they want to come back. You see them at Walmart running around with their Starbase shirt on, or they see us and say, "Hey, you're a Starbase teacher," and they get really excited about it. So they have ownership in the program, which means they have ownership, it takes it out in the community, and later in life, since we've taught them about STEM careers, then they're gonna turn around the community and they're gonna do great things. And also, they're gonna take that to their middle school and their high school, and they're going to do their math programs and the science programs. So we hope to follow these kids, if we can, and see what their outcome is. So when they're graduating, like these students, and see if they go into STEM careers later in their life. We've had over, well, it's kind of cut off, one thousand one hundred and fifty hours of STEM, because each kid gets twenty-five hours when they come, again, it's five days. So it's almost about twelve hundred hours that we've serviced them so far. All these pictures that you're seeing are the actual San Angelo ISD students participating in all the activities that we do. So, again, they come twenty-five hours over a five-day period. We have serviced one thousand one hundred and ninety-eight San Angelo students. We've serviced over thirteen hundred students because we've also pulled in the private schools during your testing weeks. So that's been, you know, great for the private schools, they got to come in as well. Next year, we also have a few other schools that are gonna come in. San Angelo ISD will be in as well, of course, we can't do it without you guys. So we're gonna get TLCA, we're gonna get San Angelo, and then hopefully pull in surrounding schools from the community and the private schools as well. So we're trying to reach our max capacity and get these kids in because all the fifth graders need the program. Within our program, the students are exposed to STEM careers, like I said earlier, so we have over two hundred and eighty-one volunteer hours, and that's from members of our military family, it's from active-duty students, the permanent party people that are on our base, and we also have people from the community that have come in from Shannon and from Goodyear Proving Grounds, and we hope to extend that out to more community organizations next year. We want to teach them about STEM, get them excited, make them want to learn, get that hands-on experience, and then we need to expose them to STEM careers, because if they don't know why they are learning something and what it's gonna bring to them later in life, then a lot of kids say, "I'm not gonna do it." So we want to make sure they are knowing where they're going with their education. So this is building the kids for their career and getting them ready, and they get to see role models and mentors as well through the program. So I can say thank you now, but again, we could not have done this, Ms. Houlihan. Thank you so much. She pushes me a lot, I'm on her text message like, you know, speed dial, and, you know, it's been a great opportunity and hopefully, you know, this will continue for years to come. Again, the program's been around since ninety-one, changed names in ninety-three to Starbase. Help us keep it going by allowing us to teach your students and bring them through the program. We're gonna also hopefully pilot a Starbase two-point-oh next year in the middle schools, which is an after-school STEM program, and I also know that you're working on or doing the STEM elective in the middle school. So this kind of goes hand-in-hand with what y'all are doing in your school system. So we hope to do that and to reach a few more kids as well and to continue it on so then they grow up and do great things here in San Angelo and the surrounding community. So we could not have done it without the school district, we could not have done it without Mr. Larry and Mr. Wayman, who have been our bus drivers all year long. Awesome. Nobody had to step in for them because they were there every single day, and I forgot to say thank you to Mr. Larry today because it was his last day there. And also, the cafeteria staff are packing all the lunches for the students. No kid went hungry during their time there, they had to have their lunches and they did a great job watching Bill Nye while they're eating, so they're always learning while they're at Starbase. So, again, thank you, and we have the summer programs coming up, so if you want to contact us, I'm gonna put that plug, there's all our information, we are on Facebook. A lot of our teachers, we ask them to post the pictures of the students because when the parents see the students in action, then they become a believer in the student as well, and the community then follows along. So again, this program is a school district, a community with the kids and everybody else in the base, so it's a joint effort here at San Angelo and with Goodfellow. Any questions? There's a lot more.
Thank you. How many students will we have this summer?
This summer, well, we're still working on the numbers for middle school. I have three programs that are, well, there's two different programs. We have a four-week program where I have a max of twenty-four students for each one of those, and then we have three five-week programs, or five-day programs, which is exactly what we're doing, and I'm pulling at least thirty-two middle schoolers for each one of those, Glenn, Lee, and Lincoln, if they can max out that. If they can't do, sixth graders, we'll pull the seventh graders, eighth graders, we'll pull any of them in. And it's also open to the public, so, Lord, help me when I'm trying to get them all through the gate on that first day. Yes, they just give me the information, we'll get them on base and get them through the program. So, right now, I do not have an accurate number for that.
And did you all, did you say y'all did all the elementaries, all the kids?
Every single, seventeen elementary schools.
Wow, so you were busy.
We were extremely busy. My teachers did a great job. So there's a staff of six of us, so we have two teachers that literally, they're on every single day. If they're not on, then I'm on, which is sometimes a good thing now. And we have two TAs as well, and then we have an office manager and then myself. So everybody's expected to know the stuff and step in the classroom when needed and, you know, all hands on deck, so.
I like the pictures that you had there, the ones you had, the rockets and the fire. You get kids there all the time.
And you can come volunteer, sir, for rocket launching days?
Oh, really?
Yes, sir, and anybody that has a STEM career or just would like to come talk to the students, we have our website, starbasegoodfellow.org, and we have information there if you'd like to volunteer for rocket launching, they are water bottle, we don't want to risk a fire in Texas. And, we do, and they've come and talked to the students as well and the school. The students at the school have done some work with our, with the fire school, have come over. Thank you. And one more plug, we actually have two students on base, well, one is a permanent party guy in the comm squadron, that he went through Starbase when he was in fifth grade in Ohio. And then there's another student who is in the three fifteenth Training Squadron that actually graduated from Hickam Starbase when he was in fifth grade. So we actually have some people there that have been through the program and they're in STEM careers now, so that's nice to see.
Catherine, I just want to thank you publicly, you have led this initiative from the ground up, a couple with Shelley's help and so many people, Tony, from around the community. This is a, this is the pinnacle of partnerships, because, you know, this, the triangle created between our base, the school district, and the Fine Arts Museum is just unbelievable. And so without all three working parts, this initiative would not have taken off like it has, and it's been unbelievable. You've heard that, you know, approximately twelve hundred students have gone through the doors, and it also opens up career pathways as the military is an option for many of our students. So the base gates have opened and we thank you for providing just a stellar education to our children, so thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Any further board comment? Thanks so much for that update, that was awesome, so.
You're welcome, I can put you on the weekly activity report email if you'd like.
That would be really good. So put all the board members on that, I'll volunteer them to be on that.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And I'm not sure you want Gerard launching any rockets.
We'll put them all there.
That's right. He did that when he was younger and it didn't work out so well.
The students can teach him how to do it over there. Thank you.
Ms. Harmon, thank you for your help with that program, too. Okay, we'll move, storm forward with our agenda. Next on our agenda is item eight, consent items. Do we have a motion to approve consent items A through G?
Move to approve consent items A through G.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for Mr. Parker and a second from Mr. Gallegos to approve our consent items. Consent item one is consider donations. Ms. Black, thank you so much for all your hard work and with the Def Olympics and fundraising associated with that, we appreciate her efforts each year. Item two is consider the superintendent's recommendations for personnel for school year eighteen, nineteen. We also have an addendum to those at our places this evening. Item three is to consider bids for Child Nutrition Department, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. This is for equipment to satisfy the needs of our Child Nutrition Department. Item D is to consider sale of vehicles, we auction those off on an annual basis, so we have a number of vehicles that we'll be auctioning. Item E is consider bid number eighteen dash oh one five for letter jackets. Item F is to consider bid number eighteen dash oh one six for fire alarm inspection services. Item G is to ratify the administration's action in the sale of properties, these are properties that are delinquent on their taxes, so those are our consent items. Does anybody have any questions from our board team on consent items A through G? Do we have any public comment on consent items A through G? If not, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is to consider bills and accounts and financial statements for the month of April two thousand eighteen. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
We have a motion from Mr. Dindel and a second from Mr. Parker to approve our bills, accounts, and financial statements for the month of April two thousand eighteen. Again, many of these items we discussed at our pre-agenda workshop, in fact, all of them we did, but does anybody have any questions or comments about our bills, accounts, or financial statements? Any public, I mean, any board comment, Bill?
Yeah, Mr. Layman, just in our fairness transparency, all the reports concerning the budget and even including our checkbook can be found online at our website, saisd.org. There's a, one of the topics is financial transparency even, and if you'll click on that, you can view all these reports.
If anybody has any questions about any of those expenditures, feel free to reach out to our administrative team concerning that. Item, do we have any public comment concerning our bills, accounts, and financial statements? If not, all in favor, our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is consider proposed amendments to the district's official budget in our general fund area. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll second.
We have a motion from Mr. Dindel and a second from Mr. Gallegos to consider our proposed amendments, our amendment for our district official budget. And there's no monetary changes, we're just moving money from one area to another in preparation for our final budget. Any further board comments? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Next week, we're gonna consider San Angelo ISD's Head Start and Early Head Start Program Implementation Plan, Section thirteen oh two, Subpart C, Education and Child Development Program Services, and, that's not Rachel, so, Myra's gonna help us with that. Thanks, Myra.
Good evening, Mr. Layman, Dr. Detloff, board members. Ms. Taunton was not able to attend this evening. I'm Myra Stewart, the Assistant Director for the Head Start, Early Head Start Program. This evening, I would like to present for your approval the San Angelo ISD Early Head Start, Head Start Program Operations, Section thirteen oh two, Subpart C, which is the Education and Child Development Program Services. In this subpart, all previous program standards related to education and child development services have been combined into one section. The educational and child development program services were significantly updated and restructured to reflect the Head Start Act, current research, and best practices in teaching and learning, to strengthen curriculum requirements, and to integrate the Head Start Early Learning Outcomes Frameworks for ages birth to five. They also corrected the imbalance between early Head Start and Head Start Education standards with a unifying birth-to-age-five approach. The program performance standards set higher standards for curriculum, staff development, and program duration, all based on research and effective practice, while maintaining Head Start's core values of family engagement, parent leadership, and providing important comprehensive services to our nation's neediest children. Are there any questions from the board?
Thanks, Ms. Stewart. Any other questions concerning our Head Start or Early Head Start plans? Thanks, Ms. Stewart. Thanks for your patience in waiting on us and thanks for being here this evening. Do we have a motion to approve our Head Start or Early Head Start program?
I'll make a motion to approve, recommend, let me start over. I'll make a motion to approve Part thirteen oh two, Subpart C, Education and Child Development Program Services for Head Start.
Second.
Okay, so I'll amend that to where it's Head Start and Early Head Start, but other than that, Mr. Gallegos made a great motion. So we have a motion from Mr. Gallegos and a second from Mr. Dindel. Do we have any board comment or questions concerning our motion? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is consider bid number eighteen dash zero zero nine. This is a paving project that's long overdue at the central softball field, so Jason, Mr. Henderson's gonna be here to help us with that.
Over the past years, the pavement around the CHS softball field has been cut through, patched, and patched in several areas during miscellaneous projects. This has created an unwanted appearance and most of all creates constant maintenance due to the patching. During the planning phase of this project, it was also brought to our attention that we are still having drainage problems that result in damage to the softball field. Due to this, an alternate has been added for additional drainage work, alternate number three. This project was originally budgeted for fifty thousand dollars as a revitalization project. The remaining balance will come from fund balance. We received two bids for this project. A scoring committee was assembled and Future Vest proposed the lowest price and received the highest score. The administration recommends contracting with Future, Future Vest, and paving the area around the CHS softball field and approving alternates two and three. Alternate two will change the paving material from asphalt to concrete, and alternate three will add needed drainage improvements. Total cost of the project, total cost of one hundred and eighty-six thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars with fifty thousand in revitalization and one hundred and thirty-six thousand. $136,496 coming from fund balance. Are there any questions?
Any questions? I think if, if Mr. Henry said it, I was not paying attention, but one of the alternates is for concrete surfaces, so it's really important. You know, we've had a number of issues with asphalt, so with that much water draining to that area, I think concrete's going to be a, a big win for us. So thanks for adding that as an, as an alternate. So do we have a motion to approve our bid number 18-009 for paving at the central high school softball field?
Well, I was just going to ask a question real quick.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I just, so they're going to do item three? They're going to, on top of doing the other work, they're going to also do item three?
Yes.
Additional concrete work?
We're going to, we're going to also add a little, a small retaining wall to hopefully direct that water, more of the water out to Johnson.
Not by Sam's. Sam, the house.
Oh, I'm thinking Sam's.
Have you ever seen the water, have you seen the water run through there at the, during a big rainstorm? It's.
Yes, last Monday, it was running like a river down there.
Yeah, it runs like a river down there. All right.
Yeah, I think the whole west side of town drains, or central west side of town drains to that parking lot. Plus, we have a large parking lot, so lots of drainage.
Right.
Other questions for Mr. Henry? If not, we have, do we have a motion to approve?
Move for approval of contracting with Future Vest to pave the area around the CHS softball field and approve alternates two and three. Alternate two will change the paving material from asphalt to concrete, and alternate three will add needed drainage improvements.
Second.
Great motion. Mr. Dindal, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any other comments or questions from our board team? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our next item is to consider bid number 18-014 for a district-wide security camera update, and Mr. Henry's going to help us with that as well.
Currently, San Angelo ISD has contracted with Crux Solutions to provide a safety and security assessment of the district. This assessment identifies areas that the district could improve to provide a safer environment for students and staff. Once this step was completed, Crux developed a five-year security plan. One of the areas identified was the upgrading of our security camera system. Crux, Huckabee, and the district prepared an RFP for the upgrade of our camera system. We received eight quality bids for this project. To discuss the project, the process, and the project, I would like to introduce Al Lawrence from Crux.
Thanks, Mr. Lawrence, for your patience. We appreciate you being here.
No worries, sir. End of the year. I want to thank everybody for their time this evening. As Mr. Henry introduced, my name is Al Lawrence. I'm the Principal for Crux Technology and Security Solutions. They remember me from when we talked about our security assessment followings. And today, we're going to talk a bit about one of those phases of that assessment plan, which is our district-wide surveillance. I'm going to give you a brief history. We're going to talk about the bid process. I'll field any questions you may have. But we also have two of our principals here who helped in that evaluation process with the system that you're talking about this evening. I do want to recognize again, my team, two-thirds of us are here. The one-third, the gentleman who did the majority of the work in the design, the walking of your facilities, meeting with your campus principals, Mr. Dennis Porter. The unique thing about the team and makeup that you've had serve you over the last several months, our background in physical security. Dennis was a 26-year retired Grand Prairie Police Officer, 10 years as an SRO in Grand Prairie ISD, as a statewide crime prevention specialist who instructs police agencies and our clients on crime prevention. Rosalie McGee, who is here with me this evening, is our project manager. Rosalie has six years' physical security experience, including time spent in a school district as the security director. She has walked in your shoes and she understands your concern. Myself, 13 years' experience in physical security, K-12 safety. So as you recall, during our assessment, when we laid out the plan, part of that was improvements to our district-wide surveillance system. We had a combination of cameras that were digital. We had a majority of our cameras that were analog. This solution that we designed is going to replace all 442 analog cameras. We're going to be adding an additional 489 IP-based cameras, and then we'll be maintaining the current 198 existing IP cameras that we have. So we're in a sense doubling our security capacity while improving the majority of the cameras that we had. We received bids, as Mr. Henry indicated, from eight companies. Actually, we received eight bids. I take that back from five companies. One company provided us with three different solutions. Those companies ranged from our local community, as far as Dallas, Fort Worth, and Abilene. So we had good representation. We had some pretty good coverage for this project. The evaluation period that we then entered after we received the bids included members of our team, members of the Huckabee team, members of the school district itself, including our technology group. And we evaluated the bids and the proposals based not just on their cost, but also the company's reputation, history, solutions that they were providing us. One of those solutions, one of the best value solutions that we saw, gave us the opportunity to entertain a video management system that is currently not the one we're using. As part of that evaluation process and looking at the software, some of our campus principals who have used the existing system got a chance to evaluate, and I'd like for them to step up for a moment and just kind of share their experiences with what they saw and how they think that the system would help improve the way they run their facility. Well, I spent 23 years in the military. Prior to coming to public education, I was in a classroom for eight years, and I've been an administrator for seven. So the features that stuck out to me that I, I, to me were noticeably better than what we have now is the ability to target an area. Just a real simple example, if there was a broken window, the way we do business now, if it happened over a weekend, I would have to go back and look through Friday night, Saturday, Sunday, hours and hours of video. And if you go too fast, you may actually miss it. The new software that we looked at, you can just zoom in on the window. I could put in a search parameter, say Friday at 5:00 PM to Monday morning at 7:00 PM. I can go about working, doing something else, and it will pull all the files where there's any motion at that window whatsoever. Then you can just pick and choose. So as far as a time saver, that was a, a huge asset. Instead of looking through hours and hours of video, target the specific clip you're looking for. And also the ability to, to filter out light. They gave us an example of headlights in a camera. For us, normally it's sunlight, east side of the building in the morning, west side in the afternoon. Sunlight hits the cameras, it renders them virtually useless. There was some adaptations in the software that allowed you to take that glare off. And the example that showed us, they were actually going in on a license plate, license plate with headlights actually shining right in. I know the quality of that camera's a little bit better than what we'll be getting, but the point was that it filtered out the incoming light and actually video. It also allowed, the software we looked at also allowed you to work in multiple areas, which right now, if I was looking at a video clip, ties up my entire system. This one, you can separate your screen. I can run a search in one area while I'm actually monitoring other areas of the building at the same time, so you don't have any monitoring capability. And the fourth thing that I really thought was beneficial was our ability to share clips. So if somebody, say AJ at Central Office, or someone else had a suspicious person or something we needed to be mindful of, they can actually download the clip and actually share it with all the other schools. Those are the four things that I recall that actually really stuck out that make my job a little bit easier and allow me to be a little more.
Just, yeah, please. If you're not on there, then there'll be a gap in our video, so thank you.
I'm Joe Gander. I'm the principal at Carver Learning Center. This is year 16 for me. I've been a classroom teacher, both in elementary and secondary campuses. I've been an at-risk coordinator and, and now a principal. Man, Mr. Danner took all my answers, but I totally agree with all that. I mean, I think with this new system, in compared to what we have right now, it's very user-friendly. It, it, I mean, if we have to go into an investigation, so to speak, I, I do like the fact, I guess you would say the analytics of these cameras were able to, you know, zero in on a certain spot or a certain area, and, and just with the analytics, it'll, it'll get us there and just pull the video of, of whatever the situation is. You know, I, I kind of think about what happened at Lakeview a couple of weeks ago. You know, had we had these cameras, I mean, I think resolution-wise and just clarity, I think we would have possibly had a better view of, of what all went on, not just there, but any, any type of vandalism that goes on in our schools, not just at Carver, but I think of, of the high schools, you know, Central, that's such an open campus, you know. I think it'd be great there. And, you know, I speak as a parent as well. I have a, a little girl who goes elementary school here, and I just think about the safety of, of all the schools and, and just everything that, that I observed, you know, when we went to this training, when we went to this presentation, I mean, in comparison to what we have now, I mean, it was, it was, I was blown away. I mean, just with, with its capabilities, like Mr. Danner said, you know, being able to zoom, you know, right now with our current cameras, if we zoom, it's, the pixels aren't that great. And, and they showed some examples, and, and whenever they said, oh, we're going to zoom it in, at first, I was somewhat pessimistic, but when I saw it, I was just like, wow, you know, that's, that's some good stuff right there. But overall, I mean, just the ability to, to be able to view multiple cameras at the same time, have some of the cameras that are live, but yet still working on other ones, you know, that was, we're trying to do an investigation. I mean, it's just, just good stuff.
Yeah, thank y'all. Thank you for serving on that, in that capacity, and also your, your long service to our district. We appreciate y'all very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. And as Mr. Gander pointed out, and it is difficult sometimes to maintain perspective on what we face daily in regards to safety and security, given the latest headlines that we've all had way too much to deal with in this past year alone. But it's important to remember that our safety and security systems address more than just physical. We have a day-to-day operation. We face day-to-day challenges, theft, fights, upset members of our community, upset members of our staff and students. So it's, it's difficult sometimes to maintain a perspective of a broader view of the security systems that we employ, and this is just one of those steps that you as a district are taking. At this point, if there are any questions regarding the evaluations or the.
I was going to ask, because you're putting all these cameras in. Like, will y'all have real-time display right there on those campuses? Will y'all have screens there where, say, like your principal or your, or y'all just going to put like one TV or just, you know, what do y'all plan on putting there?
Yes, sir. Good question. So we can do several things. One of the things that we are doing as part of the design is there will be a display in the reception areas. When anyone enters the office areas, they will be seeing, cameras are recording, that they are viewing their behavior. And sometimes when you see that, you know, when you come in, you may be emotional, you may be angry, and you catch a glimpse of that, it's kind of a little check set in your mind. Hey, you know, more than just the human being I'm dealing with, there is a security system in play here.
Will they be able to check from, like, say, like your high-traffic areas where they're, you know, because some of these schools have more than one entry area?
Yes, sir.
So will they be able to switch off, like, okay, I'm going to look at the front. Okay, now I'm going to look over here on the west side. Now I'm going to look over on this side.
Yes, sir. The, the system would allow you to cycle through select camera views if you wanted to do that. It would allow you to set a fixed view. Perhaps in the office, you have just the office. But on monitors, let's say we have APs who are in the high school and they're on one side of the building, well, they may be wanting to see the displays on their computer screen, specific cameras that deal with their area. And you could have that, and then on the other side, the APs and the principal have the computer screen up those specific. So it's very flexible and the adaptability to set those views. You may have times of day when, 3:00 PM, I tend to have more issues on this side. Maybe in the cafeteria, I want to bring the lunch cameras up.
Dr. Kingman?
These cameras, they can be accessed remotely, like, from outside of our campuses?
Yes, sir. If you had to, they are password protected, and the system is a web-based application. So that would include laptop or mobile technology. So your SROs won't have to be sitting behind a desk. They can be looking at these cameras. They have an iPad or a phone.
And in addition to that, we are working with San Angelo Police Department to give them access to our cameras. That would, it would help them in multiple ways, even in route, they'll, they could have access. So we're working on that. I fully expect that to be in place before school starts next year.
And those are a couple, those were a couple of questions that I had, and I'm, thank you for asking and answering. Mr. Lawrence, would you tell them, tell us a little bit? I know we worked out a deal with your company several months ago for the design of ours, but do you, does Crux, just so for our audience would know, do you guys work with other school districts in designing security systems?
Yes, sir, we do.
I mean, is that, I don't know, I just honestly don't know a lot about you, but do you, is that your main expertise is security with, with school systems, school districts?
Are, are the team members that I introduced to you, who, I, I have been doing this since 2003, and it has been exclusively in K-12 for myself, for Dennis and Rosalie, from K-12 backgrounds as well, which I think is an advantage because you can design a security system for any facility or building, but if you don't understand the day-to-day operations and the challenges, you could be missing the mark. So.
That was my point. You're, just like Huckabee, architects we've used because they do a lot of architectural work in designing schools and school districts. I assume you work closely with Huckabee in, in working the design of the security systems for school districts. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir. We, we also work with the Huckabee team. I'm a former member of that Huckabee team. That 2003 work, I was a shirt, and I headed up the security design team for them. But we also worked with the architects in trying to better understand how their design works for us or against us, from simple mitigation to crime prevention practices. But we also help the architects understand what we call crime prevention through environmental design, SEPTED. That's been a, a strong relationship that we've had for several.
And this week, Mr. Dindal and I especially have kind of asked many questions of Dr. Bright and Jason Henry, and appreciate all the information we've gotten from them. But just to reiterate some of the things, the software that we were chosen, that we like, was only the one company that was recommended, VGI? Were they the only one that, that, that bid that particular software?
I'd say that's correct, or did we have another? Just VGI? That's correct. VGI was the only company that proposed the Vigilon.
But the bid, the bid specs that we sent out mentioned that all companies could bid that software or any, there's, they had a choice of two or three different softwares that they could bid a proposal on. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir. I believe we had three.
So all the companies that didn't bid this software had the opportunity to bid it had they wanted to?
Absolutely. We had three management platforms, and I think three to four different camera manufacturers listed. That could have been provided in a, I have a mixed scenario.
And you, in your experience with Crux, have you utilized the particular software that, that is being recommended in, in this particular proposal?
Yes, we've had past clients who have used that platform. Most recently was Kaufman ISD. And I know as part of the evaluation process, San Angelo talked with Kaufman about their, you know, how the system's operated for them, been a good system, and, and they had very positive rankings. As a consultant, you know, we maintain kind of an independent. As a consultant, you know, we maintain kind of an independent I and platform. We want to make sure our clients are getting the right product, whether it's company A or company B. What we definitely don't want you to end up with is a company C that performs F-level work.
And the cameras where we had a thou, think over a thousand new cameras that were going to be installing was, in our bid specs, did every provider know how many of the different megapixel cameras that we were going to be needing? Everybody had the equal opportunity to bid on those certain number of cameras that had the particular specs that we wanted, the number of megapixels and so forth. And they had the opportunity to choose the different manufacturers. You had, I think you listed two or three different camera manufacturers. So you were basically saying, you can bid any of these, these models, and, but we need so many of them to have to be. I don't remember what it was, three megapixels, some so many five megapixels, some of them higher than that. So everybody was on the same playing field where it came to the cameras that you were going to be bidding.
That is correct, sir. Our, for each campus, we developed what we call a camera type schedule that provides you the type of camera. And then it breaks it down to each camera is numbered, and that number and that camera, it will tell you the megapixel, how the camera is mounted, whether it's wall or ceiling, whether it's an existing camera or a replacement. So all that information was included by campus. Essentially, it was an Excel spreadsheet we incorporated into our drawing.
And I assume the cameras that were in our specs were, that we were allowing the contractors to bid on were cameras that you have experienced utilizing in other school districts or you knew about, or you wouldn't have allowed it to be bid on?
That is correct. All the products that were listed were those that have been used by K twelve school districts, higher ed. No small companies, if you will. These are all nationally-recognized manufacturing.
And I don't know if I'm saying the term right. The servers or the computers that store the information that were gathered by the cameras, that was also listed. I think you wanted servers that could hold, what, fourteen hours' worth of, is it fourteen hours' worth of data, memory or something?
Yeah, fourteen days.
Days, I'm sorry, fourteen days. All right. So there again, everybody had the same, they're all on the same playing field as to what type, what manufacturer and what capacity the servers needed to be.
Yes, sir. We include program requirements, so we tell the contractors what we expect each camera to record at. Then impact the size of the server's capacity and capabilities. And we also establish how many days we want to contain that video report. So although we set it at fourteen, our cameras are recording motion, you may exceed that, say, during the holidays, when you don't have as much activity in the corridors. Cells, the camera's not capturing as much.
And last, last thing, I appreciate your being patient with me. The company that is being recommended by Mr. Henry for this bid was really the, if I'm looking at it right, had the, not the lowest bid, but the second lowest bid. But the company that had the lowest bid was downgraded in its score. What, what was the problem with that company? I think it was the one in Carrollton, Sigma.
Yeah, Sigma provided a bid that only calculated for the surveillance cameras. It omitted our infrastructure requirements, the cabling that we needed to have installed for those cameras to run. So they, in essence, bid half the scope, and for that, we could not accept it. We were looking for a turn.
It wouldn't have been able, it wouldn't have accomplished what we wanted.
That is correct, sir.
All right, that's all the questions have. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence.
Mr. Dindel?
Yeah, Mr. Lawrence, one question. You, you gave a breakdown of cameras currently in the district and some older cameras that are being replaced, and we're, our bid, our bid shows the approval of a thousand forty-two new cameras. Is that, is that in addition to the old ones that we're keeping, a thousand forty-two plus the, the current ones, they're going to be I P-capable now?
Yeah, I believe my count included a hundred and ninety-eight existing I P. And then the remainder were either analog that we were replacing, or were just going to be all new cameras that we were adding to areas that currently did not have surveillance.
I appreciate everybody's working hard on this, and certainly your team and y'all's help. It's a pretty significant cost on the other part of the district, so, you know, we're looking at a cost of about one and a half million dollars. So a, a pretty proactive approach, as we mentioned earlier, as far as security, and certainly upgrades a lot of our existing equipment to, and adds a significant number of cameras. So thank you for your work on this, Dr. Detloff.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Lam. Also, I just want to acknowledge again that this bid item is part of a larger piece of a multi-layered approach to, for our school district to establish control of environments. So this bid item is definitely a piece of that larger puzzle. I also want to acknowledge that our board was proactive in their actions by requesting this security audit approximately a year ago before our two most recent tragic events, one being in Texas. So I just wanted to acknowledge that our district has been proactive in our approach in gaining a security audit and assessment, and then taking steps of action as we implement that. Because it is a multi-layer approach, not only in physical structure, but in behavioral component of our, our children and students as well. Thank you.
So I have a question I just thought of. How, how long does full implementation take?
We had originally slated through March.
Okay.
For cabling replacement, the addition of the cameras, and the replacement of the infrastructure. We feel very positive that the contractors, and the contractor felt very positive that that was not going to be a challenge or an issue for them to make. We're hoping that we may even make that ahead of schedule, so.
Okay, any other questions? If not, do we have a motion to approve the bid of V G I Technology Visicom Group Incorporated for their bid of all-in of a million, four twelve, four nineteen, eighty-four?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve bid eighteen dash zero one four for the approval of V G I to install one thousand forty-two new cameras, Avilon video management system, and approve alternate one for the removal of old cabling at a cost of, base cost of one point three seven seven million with a fifty thousand contingency allowance and additional seventy-five thousand dollars for infrastructure upgrades.
Second?
Thanks, Dr. Kingman, and thanks, Gerard. So we have a motion from Dr. Kingman, second from Mr. Gallegos. Do we have any other board comment or questions? Do we have any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All, any, any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Thanks, Taylor and Bill and Max, especially for y'all's work on that, and Jeff for answering a lot of questions this week, so thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, let's do our announcements. We have Paige's graduation is May the twenty-third of two thousand and eighteen. That's at the McNeese Convention Center. Who's accepting our graduates?
Amy.
Amy, okay. So Amy will be doing that. Our Central High School graduation is May the twenty-sixth at ten A M. Becky reminded us, if we want to ride, we need to be here at nine, so anyone that wishes to get to the Central High School graduation and see if Dr. Detloff has enough stroke to get us in the right gate this year. So we'll, so that, be here at, at nine o'clock, and then Lakeview High School graduate, graduation is the same day at four P M. at the Foster Communications Coliseum. And we'll leave here at three for that trip, so anyone wishing to ride with us. If you're not riding, please let everybody know, so we're not looking for you. Our financing pre-agenda workshop, Dr. Detloff sent me a note about that, I believe, today about changing that date from Monday to Tuesday. Is that correct?
Becky, do you have this? From the sixteenth to the tenth, is that correct? Okay, that's July.
Okay, June's still good. So we got June eleventh for our pre-agenda and June eighteenth for our regular board meeting. And then we also have an academic workshop scheduled for June eighteenth at seven P M., which will follow our regular board meeting in June. Do we have any other board activity or any items that someone would like to put on our agenda for a future meeting? If not, and here are no objection, we'll, oh, I'm sorry. I knew that. We're going into real property. We're going to go into closed session. And in doing so, we're going to discuss, under Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code five five one, subchapters D and E. We're going to talk about real property, and that's under, the exceptions there is five five one oh seven two. We're returning from our closed session. We took no official board action, and certainly we didn't take any votes, and here are no objection. We'll stand adjourned.